Uh, city manager, go ahead and introduce our session, please.
Yes, uh, commission, we have one work session item tonight. And joining us, we have Jill Allen, our City of Springfield Law Director, Sergeant Denise Jones, the Victim Services Sergeant for the Sheriff's Office, Lauren Dennis, uh, who's a Supervisor Advocate, um, Clark County Victim Witness Division, Erin McInney, Chief Prosecutor for the City of Springfield, Jenna Wasserman, Deputy Chief Prosecutor for the City of Springfield, and Rebecca Sannott, who is the Assistant Clark County Prosecutor, for a presentation tonight on the topic of domestic violence. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jill.
Good evening, Commissioners. We'll start first. We're going to give an overview of the criminal justice system. And we'll start first with Sergeant Jones to just explain a little bit about victimology.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for the invitation to come and talk to you guys tonight. Uh, do you mind if I stand? I'm a, I'm a, okay.
Stand. I would not tell you no to many things, okay?
I appreciate that, Mary Lou. Thank you very much.
You can speak to the microphone, though, because we do need to hear. It needs to be recorded. Thank you so much.
Up there? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that'd be.
Is this a little bit better?
Perfect.
Okay, sorry. I like to stand up when I talk. So, uh, my name is Sergeant Denise Jones. I work for the Clark County Sheriff's Office. I run the Sheriff's Office, um, intimate partner crime unit. So we handle with the Sheriff's Office specifically domestic violence, stalking, strangulation, and protection orders. Uh, and so I kinda wanted to give you guys just a, a quick overview, um, about domestic violence and domestic violence victims. Because I think a lot of times, when we look at this genre of crime, we approach it as we do every crime. And I think that, overall, is where we make our first mistake. So when you look at victims of these particular types of crimes and compare them to someone that maybe had their shed broken into, we, we treat those two victims the same. And what we don't always take into account is the fact that domestic violence victims typically have a relationship with their offender. So we hyper-focus nationwide, uh, we hyper-focus on putting a lot of the onus on victims. Uh, I need a victim to participate. I don't understand why the victim don't, doesn't want to participate. Uh, I don't understand why the victim doesn't want to come in and talk to me. What we look at these particular victims, there's a grooming process there. Uh, we don't go out on a date, I physically assault you, and then we continue to date, right? Most people would agree with that. So there is a period there where that offender is typically a generational offender. Uh, these offenders typically have generations of domestic violence that they've witnessed or been a part of, uh, as kids. So we look at that offender, they start grooming that victim. There's fidelity in that relationship. Uh, they may share finances, they may share a household, they may share children in common, uh, they may have spent a significant amount of time together, whatever that may look like. Domestic violence spans the socio-economic scale in a community. It's not just relative to people that are homeless. It's not just relative to communities of color. Uh, it's not just relative to marginalized communities. It's not specific to communities that predominantly are white. Like, it spans the entire socio-economic, uh, scale for the entire community, whether it be in the city of Springfield, whether it be out in the county, right? So when we look at this particular crime, we respond as law enforcement officers, and we start interacting with a victim the same way we may potentially interact with a victim that has no fidelity with their offender. What we need to take into account, I think sometimes what we as a public, not just law enforcement, we look at victims and, and, well, if they were really, it was really that bad, they would just leave. It's not just that easy to leave. Uh, I think the, the number, and Lauren can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's seven or more times, or nine or more times, uh, for that victim to leave before, or if they ever leave that relationship. But yet, when we start working these particular cases, we, we don't understand why those victims don't come in and go through the criminal justice system. But what we don't understand is that may not be the, the best course of action for that victim. That may not be what gets them out of the situation. Offenders and victims both know, we cannot keep offenders in jail for forever. So if the Sheriff's Office goes out, uh, on a domestic violence call, and let's say we make a physical arrest, more often than not, depending on the criminal case history of that offender, they're gonna get a bond, or they're gonna get OR'd. That victim knows that offender's probably gonna come right back. So what are they supposed to do? If they participate with us, and the offender knows they're participating with us, that could potentially get them physically assaulted as soon as they, that, that offender leaves our jail. So if I share with this young lady here, let's say we are in an intimate partner relationship, and I'm the sole provider for health insurance, or I'm the sole provider for the income of our family, or I take care of the bills, how is she going to put me in jail, knowing that those bills are gonna go unpaid? Knowing that that income is not gonna come into that household? Knowing that we may potentially lose our healthcare? Let's flip it around. Let's say she is the sole provider for income. I watch our children, because childcare is expensive. She has to be at work at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. The kids don't go to school until 8:00. Somebody's gotta be there to take the, the kids to school, to get them breakfast, to make their lunches, whatever that may look like. Again, if I'm her only resource, how is she gonna put me in jail? So when we look at these particular victims, again, we hyper-focus on the fact that they don't come back and participate with us. So, having said all that, at the Sheriff's Office, we, we get cases in a couple of different ways. So we do have jurisdiction in the entire county. So lucky for us, uh, that cases that originate in the city of Springfield, or in the Village of Enham, North Hampton, whatever that may look like, we can take that case, right? Uh, we work with community-based advocates out of Project Woman. We started our program back in 2017. Prior to 2017, we had no response, or very little response, to misdemeanor domestic violence cases. And as you'll hear from both these amazing prosecutors that we are so blessed to have, uh, you'll see that that system is set up, and it's very difficult for victims to participate. But we really didn't have, um, anything that would follow up, or anyone that would follow up with those misdemeanor cases. Where typically, those cases are gonna, they're gonna start in our system, if they ever start in our system. So in 2017, Sheriff's Office got a grant through the International Association of Chiefs of Police to change our response to gender-based violence crimes, which, again, are sexual assault, uh, sexual violations, domestic strangulation, uh, and stalking. We, uh, onboarded with Project Woman. They are our local community-based advocates. Um, the difference that Lauren can tell you a little bit about later, um, they have privilege. So anything that they say to those community-based advocates, they don't have to share with us. Uh, we rely heavily on, heavily on them. Um, I know it may sound counterintuitive, uh, because we will call them out to the scene with our deputies. Uh, the deputies will put victims on the phone with them. Uh, we can transport a victim, uh, or a survivor over to wherever that advocate may be. Um, and they have office hours at the Sheriff's Office. They have privilege, and when that victim communicates with them, they don't have to share that with us. We've put that in place as a safeguard for the victim. I want, or we want, at the Sheriff's Office, someone that is completely impartial, that can be that safe person for that victim. Uh, so we started our program back in 2017. So the way that we take in calls, um, the prosecutor's office will call. I will go over and talk to a victim. Uh, we get naturally, just like the city of Springfield, we get calls for service. We work closely with the City of Springfield. We have a, a different setup. So we are able to assist them with some of the cases that they are unfortunately just don't have the time to work, whereas we do. Um, so our deputies will go out for calls of service. Uh, that may generate arrests, an arrest, it by ORC generates a report, whether there's an arrest made or not. The advocates will bring in people for me to meet with, so I can start taking a report. Those are the ways that we take in reports. But having said that, again, not every case can go through the criminal justice system. Not every single victim wants to go through the criminal justice system. It's not always safe for every victim to go through the criminal justice system. Uh, they may lose access to housing, may, may lose access to money. Uh, they may lose access to childcare. There are so many reasons why victims cannot, uh, and, and just are unable to participate with us. So knowing that, knowing that victims have difficulty reporting, knowing victims that are typically isolated by their offender before they ever get to us, we try to put things in place to help those victims as best we can. Uh, so you'll see cases that will go through, Rebecca and Erin will both talk about it. It might start out as a criminal offense, right? So our deputies are gonna go out, they're gonna take an initial report. Uh, if they can locate that suspect, they're gonna put them in jail. If they can't, they'll file a Florida warrant. Uh, then we immediately start following up with that victim. So I'm making a phone call, or the advocate is making a phone call with me. Um, or the advocate and I are meeting with that victim for a, an in-person follow-up. So essentially, what we're looking to do is try to get that victim services, knowing that they're probably not gonna participate with, with us. Uh, like I said, seven to nine times before a victim leaves, if they ever leave for good. So I wanna put things in place for that victim, that they always have the opportunity to come back and speak with me. Or they have an advocate that is there solely for them, to help them navigate their relationship. Because we also forget that every, every situation is different. As a law enforcement officer, I might go out there and say, okay, well, this is just like the last time I was with these people, or it's similar to another call. But every relationship has its own dynamic. So we have put things in place at the Sheriff's Office, such as lethality assessment. Um, we have a protocol for our deputies to contact Project Woman, to get somebody out there, or talk to them in the middle of the night. Uh, but again, when we just hyper-focus on pushing someone through the criminal justice system, that's not always the best outcome for the victim or the offender. Now certainly, there are high-risk offenders that we try to focus on. Uh, but, but again, we try to work with what's best for the victim. And we try to let that victim tell us. Because when you look at domestic violence, the power and control's been taken from that victim. So we try to bring back power and choices to that victim. I'll try to let that victim tell me how they wanna navigate the criminal justice system. Because if you look again at the criminal justice system, it's not set up for victims. It's always, it's not always victim-friendly. If I look at coming down here to get a protection order, I can only get a protection order, uh, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 3:30, but I have to save an hour for lunch to wait for the magistrates to get back here. Again, using you, ma'am, I'm sorry. Uh, as my intimate partner, let's say she works 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM as a nurse. How is that person gonna get a protection order? So again, we try to put safety safeguards, we try to put people in place to work with victims outside of just working with us. Uh, if she, she doesn't get time off to go to court, we're expecting her to come to pre-trial. We're expecting him to be, her to be present for a trial. So we're asking so much of these victims, on top of the fact that sometimes in our law enforcement investigations, we have to rely heavily on that victim. So I'm expecting not only that victim to be the predominant supplier of facts, information, and evidence to push this case forward, I need them to be present to push this case forward. Uh, and Rebecca will talk about it here in a few minutes. But we are pushing cases forward without victims. We are trying to improve our law enforcement response at the Sheriff's Office, uh, and I know the same with the city of Springfield, to push cases forward with and without victims. Uh, because unfortunately, there are cases that we have high-risk offenders, and we have to do that. Uh, and, and that's a whole conversation with the victim. I don't ever try to push a case forward when a victim doesn't want me to, without having a conversation with that victim if they'll allow me to. So I will turn it over to these young ladies and kinda give them, give you an idea of how they take cases in.
Thank you. Actually, his voice activated. Just put it right in front of, right in front of you, please.
Um, my name's Erin McInney. I'm the new Chief Prosecutor here for the city of Springfield. Um, and I just kinda wanted to go briefly through how cases proceed in our office and through the municipal court. So, as the city prosecutor's office, we handle adult misdemeanor cases that are filed in the Clark County Municipal Court, um, and that's pretty much it. We don't handle cases with juveniles, we don't handle felony. Um, and how that starts is, in Clark County, we have what you would call is a direct file system, which means charges are filed directly by law enforcement with the court. Um, so typically, we first are notified about a case by the court. Um, they send us a notice, and that's what causes us to open that case in our office and also start our process. Um, that process is to assign that case to a prosecutor. Um, then we request the evidence from whatever law enforcement agency we might have to be dealing with. Um, and we also send the victim out a subpoena for the first date of the hearing, um, the first hearing date, I should say. With that subpoena, we send them a letter of information. That is, for us to introduce ourselves, we give them the name of their point of contact with our victim's advocate, um, in our office. We let them know kind of how things are gonna proceed, um, give them some other information. We give them a, a rights sheet on Marcy's Law. Uh, Marcy's Law is the Ohio Crime Victims Bill of Rights. So that's actually a constitutional amendment that guarantees specific rights for victims. And we send them a, a copy of that and kind of an overview of, of what kind of rights they have. Um, and we also send them an information sheet that we ask them to fill out, um, so we can get up-to-date contact information, and maybe some contact information we might not have, like an email, things like that. Um, now, if the victim does appear for that first hearing, it gives us the opportunity to speak to them. We gather information from them, both about the case and about them. Um, we inquire to them as to how they would like to see the case proceed. Um, if the victim does not respond to that subpoena and come to that first hearing, we request the matter be set for a second hearing, and we send them another subpoena. In addition to that subpoena, we also try to contact them by other means. Um, and that varies depending on what other means of contact we have for them. Sometimes it is an email, some, a lot of times it's a phone number. We might, if we get a, a subpoena returned, uh, that they're no longer at the address that we have, we try to mail a letter, hopefully, hoping that they will have a forward address with the post office. Um, we also take a look at the case and assess if we will be able to go out, go forward without victim participation. Um, and if the victim does not appear or contact us at the second pre-trial, um, and then, and we've been unable to contact them, we, um, have to decide whether we want to dismiss without prejudice or attempt to go forward without the victim. Now, whenever we dismiss a case without prejudice, um, let's say that victim comes, uh, comes forward at a later date. Sometimes they may have moved, and we might, we might not have the right contact information, things like that. It is possible for us to refile those cases and go forward, and that does happen on occasion. So, sometimes a case will be dismissed initially, but then that case can be refiled at a later time if we get the information that we need. Um, if we do decide to go forward without the victim, um, obviously, there are certain things that we need to show. Going forward without a victim is never easy, I'm gonna be honest with you, because, um, usually, the victim's testimony is, is the majority of our evidence, or it's our most important evidence. Um, but the things that we look at to try to do that is, were there other witnesses at the scene that, that we can have testify? Um, did the defendant make any admissions to officers on the scene? Or are there jail calls? All jail calls are recorded, um, and we can get, um, copies of those. And those are a great source of information. I know Denise spends a lot of time reviewing jail calls. We actually resolved a case yesterday that we were able to resolve because she intercepted the jail call where the defendant made admissions. So even though the victim never appeared in court, we were able to get a conviction for that because, um, because of that jail call. So, um, we also look at the 911 call, body cam video, um, posts on social media. So all of those things are things that we can use, if they're available, um, to try to go forward without a victim. Um, so, you know, we do, we do try to encourage our victims to participate with us. That's absolutely, um, what we wanna do. And we've, we've put a lot of things in place to try to encourage them to participate, and also make it an easier person. And I will say, a lot of these things were put in place, um, or at least started by Mr. DeBartola prior to him leaving. So, um, some of the things we've done is, we've, um, gotten a new record-keeping system for our office, which makes it easier for us to organize things and communicate with each other about what's happening with the case. It's not uncommon for a defendant to have more than one victim, or, or more than one case and more than one courtroom. So this makes it easier for us to track that and kind of be on the same page. Uh, we also have tried to provide a safe space for victims at court, um, so they're not in a hallway alone with their perpetrator. Um, and creating a single contact person in our office, a victim's advocate, who gives them somebody that they can contact. I think it can be very intimidating for a victim every time they call our office to have to deal with a different person and tell their story over again. So we're trying to eliminate that by giving them one specific person, um, that will see them through the court. Um, another thing is, is we are allowing them to be available by phone. As, as Denise said, you know, a lot of times, people have to think about the fact that they have, have to work, they have childcare. If we're able to establish that phone contact with them, um, we, whenever possible, allow them to be available by phone during those hearings, so they're not missing that time for work, or, or taking that time out of their life. Um, and we also have tried to facilitate alternate means. The biggest thing is email. If people are at work, they're not always able to contact us during our normal business hours. Uh, but if they sit down and email us, they can give us documents or, or whatever kinds of things that, um, that would be helpful for the case. Um, and we also are trying to work to help connect those victims to services outside of the criminal justice. Um, you know, the, these, oftentimes, these, these victims are facing a, a lot of obstacles in their lives, and we, we try to get them connected with other places in the community that can resolve them, whether that's for housing, for, um, childcare, whatever. So, you know, there's, each case is different and has a unique set of circumstances, and we try to be aware of that. Um, one of the things that I think will, going forward, will really facilitate helping us work on these cases is the fact that, um, Springfield Police Division now has body cam. And that allows us to, um, we're able to watch that, and sometimes that helps us recognize things. One of the things, in order to use a victim's statements to an officer, certain requirements have to be met if that victim is not testifying. Um, and sometimes, we're able to watch that video and recognize that we have that circumstance. And so that victim's, um, state would be admissible. And we don't have the body cam, it makes us more difficult for us, because it's, we only know that if we were told that. So those types of things, I think, have really started to make sense, though.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Sannott. I am the prosecutor handling felony, domestic violence cases, violation of protection order, stalking, and adult assault cases. Um, a couple of things I wanted to say, I, there's a, a pretty bad slide up there for you, but it kind of illustrates how most of my cases start. 99% of them start in municipal court. You'll see there are charges filed in municipal court. You will see that the disposition of those charges says dismissed prosecutor request. However, if you take a look, you're right, that is the felony filing of the same. So very often, what happens is, there's a municipal court case filed. I take that case to grand jury, I take a look at that case, and then I indict. So if you look at the municipal court website, you might see something as dismissed, dismissed prosecutor request, does not mean, yes, sir.
I wanna make sure I understand this clearly.
Sure.
Case comes to you in municipal court. If it's a misdemeanor case, you take care of it. If it's a felony case, then it's likely to be moved to another court out of your jurisdiction.
Actually, I do the felony. So when a case is filed in municipal court, it is filed either as a misdemeanor or a felony. So all of our cases are generally filed, even felony levels, in misdemeanor court courts.
Right.
Right.
But the felonies are generally transferred to another court.
That's exactly right. Once they are indicted, the case is dismissed in misdemeanor court.
So if I were to look only at the records of municipal court, one could conclude that you're dismissing a lot of cases.
That, that absolutely could be the case.
When in fact, you're dismissing them because they're being transferred to what's the other court?
Felony court, to Common Pleas.
Common Pleas Court. So they haven't been, the person hasn't been let off the hook. Quite to the contrary, they got moved to a higher court theoretically, the Common Pleas Court, where their case will be tried.
That is exactly true.
So you really need both pieces of information to be able to make an accurate judgment. Am I correct?
I believe you're absolutely right.
Okay. I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
The other thing that, yes, ma'am.
Just a real quick question. Would you be able to provide us with, like, a clear version of that slide?
Yes.
Because it's impossible to see.
I know. It's, it's terrible.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Not a problem. The other thing that I think is important to note is that domestic violence cases don't always say domestic violence. Aggravated burglary, robbery, um, all of these things can be surrounding a domestic violence incident. So you meet, you may see a burglary case charged with a strangulation or a domestic violence charge in the same case, because it arose out of a domestic violence incident. So if all that you were looking for is domestic violence on the title of what's charged, you're gonna miss a lot of cases. Because most of my cases are not merely domestic violence, not merely, but not only domestic violence. Um, especially now, since Ohio passed our strangulation statute, I have had an explosion of felony cases. Because strangulation is in and of itself a felony, and most of my cases at this point end up being strangulation and domestic violence. So one thing I, I know that, I don't wanna, I wanna respect your time, but one thing I wanted to say briefly. Denise talked about relying upon victim test, relying upon victims. And I have had more than one victim come to me and say, you know, this can't all be on my shoulders, it's too much. I have had victims come to me and say, if I put him in jail, I cannot pay my bills. I cannot feed my child. I cannot deal with. So, and I have probably a good 75% of victims come to me and say they don't wanna proceed, or they wanna recant statements. And what I tell them always is, I understand your position. I understand that you may not wanna proceed, and I am not necessarily gonna require you to be there, but I am going to keep the case going. Because usually, if I can keep a case going, I can get a conviction. I can get some type of justice, even if it's not because the victim went and tested. A lot of evidence out there. As long as we get that evidence, we can proceed with, which is what I do. So I'm gonna, unless you have any other questions, I'm gonna end with that, because I know we're kind of already over.
And just briefly, so this is the first time that I'm aware of in Clark County that we are all working collectively. So the prosecutor's office, both misdemeanor and felony, community-based advocates that don't always have a good, um, uh, interaction or relationship with law enforcement, victim witness, like, we are all working together collectively to address these cases. Um, we meet on a regular basis to address repeat and high-risk offenders. Because not only are these offenders dangerous to their victims, they're dangerous to law enforcement. They're dangerous to you as community members. If I pull a criminal history for a DV offender, a domestic violence offender, to, to see if I can enhance that charge from a misdemeanor to a felony, I'm not just looking at domestic violence on their criminal case history, right? There are other genres of crime there, just like, uh, Mrs. Sannott said. You know, it, it, because you're not looking for aggravated burglary. We charge a ton of stalking cases that, that are domestic violence-related. But if you're just looking for that tag of domestic violence, you may miss it. Um, we are also doing training this year that we collectively sat down together to identify gaps in law enforcement service, like, uh, Erin addressed hearsay exceptions. That's not something that law enforcement typically gets trained on, but we're doing that here. So we sit down on a regular basis, we work together, we collectively address these cases. Doesn't matter if the city of Springfield is taking that case. The city of Springfield, the Sheriff's Office, we all sit together to try to collectively address these cases, because these are dangerous offenders, right? But we are doing training to address, address gaps. Uh, that will be o, open to every law enforcement agency in Clark County. It's, domestic violence is a mandatory CPT this year. Uh, we put this class together, uh, collectively, all of us. So we are doing things in Clark County that, that haven't been done before to address gender-based violence, to address sexual assault, domestic violence, stalking, strangulation, right? Uh, so, again, things are happening here in your community that maybe not everybody in this community is aware of. Uh, but we are here to support victims. And that doesn't always mean, again, going through the criminal justice, that's not always the easiest route for marginalized people. You know, imagine being a Haitian individual in our community right now, trying to report to law enforcement. Imagine being a person of color, trying to report. Imagine being LGBT. Imagine, uh, being deaf or hard of hearing. Imagine being limited English speaking. You know, law enforcement isn't always the safest place for everyone. So we try to address that with wraparound services from our own community to make sure that victims that are, we are seeing on a daily basis, get the best services possible. And that doesn't always mean law en, and we have to understand that.
And we can't get angry at victims when they don't wanna participate. I mean, I know that it's, it's frustrating for me, it's frustrating for law enforcement. When I have a case and I know that something happened, but the, the individual who is victimized doesn't wanna be a part of that system, then I have to try to work around, I have to try to do what I can to make sure that justice is done, even if that person doesn't wanna participate. But we still need to keep in mind that that is a human being who is victimized, and we have to respect their humanity and their choices, and understand that they are allowed.
One of the messages we try to send to our victims is that you never burn a bridge that's are off. So I, you know, there are people who I have dealt with on many occasions, who, who will not participate. We always support those victims under, um, because as, as Denise said, it might take seven, it might take more times, and, and when they're ready, we're gonna be ready to help.
And Lauren can speak to the fact that we've worked with a victim for two years before she was ever ready to, to participate with law enforcement. We've worked with a victim, another victim for two years, that never participated. Uh, and just like Erin said, I mean, I'm constantly listening to jail calls. What can I charge with that I'm the sole provider of facts, evidence, and information? And get that victim out of that situation, so they don't have, um, I'll let Lauren, I'm sure Lauren has a couple of things to say briefly.
Thank you guys so much for inviting me here today to talk to you guys. My name's Lauren Dennis. I'm gonna give you just a brief history so that you understand what my experience is for this. Uh, I have been in this field for about 13 years. Uh, eight of those years have been in this community. And I started as an advocate at Project Woman, and I moved my way up there, and then I came over to the prosecutor's office last year. So that is relevant, because I am working with two different forms of advocacy. So we have community-based advocacy, and then we have systems-based advocacy. Uh, the major difference between the two, right? Like, advocacy's are, advocates are safety planning and resources. Uh, community-based advocates have more community-based resources, whereas court-based advocates have the system knowledge to walk victims through that process, because it is not victim-centered. I think the, the biggest difference between the two, like, uh, Sergeant Jones mentioned, was confidentiality. So community-based advocates have confidentiality. And we are grateful to our community partners, because they respect that. They don't cross those boundaries. They don't say, like, hey, can you tell me anything? They have always been amazingly respectful of understanding, like, hey, hypothetically, what does this look like so that I can make this as safe as possible for these victims? Um, the one thing I think that, that's important to hear from what advocates do, I, I could talk about safety planning for, for years, because it's my passion. I think it's the most important thing. I think it's the most important thing that we do as advocates is safety plan with people to make them safer. But one of the things that you've consistently heard about all night is how victims don't participate and the million reasons that we have for not participating. And that's what advocates do. We try to remove some of those barriers. When that barrier can't be removed, it's okay, I'm going to walk through it with you. And that might mean children's services. Listen, we have no reason to be afraid of children's services, it's a resource and we are absolutely going to use it. It's okay. And, and having somebody to hold your hand through that and understand and realize like, hey, they're not here for this reason. This is not about taking your, like, I am genuinely here to help you. Building that relationship, building that trust is so important and removing those barriers because those barriers are safety concerns. That person is going to go back because that is their form of income. That's how they're feeding their children, that's how they're able to go to work. Like, that is a very real thing in this community is a lack of access to resources. And it's not here, it's everywhere, right? Like, it's not that we're lacking in that, it's just that we don't necessarily always have access to it. So that's what advocates are trying to do. We're trying to connect those links, walk with that person through those steps. Sometimes you just need somebody to hold your hand, to go down with you to the job and family services, to go with you to talk to the prosecutor, to go with you to file a protection order, to help answer those questions. So that's kind of, advocates kind of fill in that gap. And then when we have conversations, difficult conversations, we're bringing that victim voice to center. Because that's what it should always be, it should always be centered around the victim. And it rarely is, but we do a great job collectively as a team. Make no mistake, that's not to say that all of our conversations are like, easy or simple. They're not. And we have all had really hard conversations to say like, I hear where you're at, I understand this is your case, I'm worried about safety. And the one thing that I will say for this team is that that is always respected. I have always been respected when I say, hey, like, this is a safety issue for me. So that's kind of in a nutshell what advocacy does, I hope that, that kind of helps. Yes ma'am.
How many advocates are employed at your, at your place of business?
So there are three of us.
Okay, for the city or is that the county?
That's for the county. City has one advocate that just, that her, her position was transitioned into, into advocacy as well. Um, so she's coming in. And then we have two main agencies that we work with in the community. That would be Project Woman and they're running about six, I think, and City Lookout is at one right now.
We were going to try to get some federal funding to kind of bolster that. So initially what we had thought about and talked about last year, uh, is we were going to try to, to all of us, all of our respective, um, employers, we're going to try to go into a grant, a federal grant together. Uh, essentially what we were going to try to do is put, um, some more advocates in municipal court. Because like I said earlier, that's kind of where a lot of our cases start. Uh, it looks a little bit different now with the strangulation law. Ohio was the last, uh, last state in fifty states to get, to handle legislation for, uh, strangulation. So that's kind of, that's kind of changed that a little bit. So we initially wanted to get some federal funding to put advocates in municipal court. So we were essentially getting all of the cases at the ground level with an advocate. Uh, but unfortunately, um, federal funding kind of looks a little weird right now. So we're just, we're, we have that on pause.
I too. Also, one other question about advocacy, what is the advocate, um, caseload ratio?
Oh, so we, and the three advocates that we have in our office, I would say probably roughly around one, one hundred to two hundred cases, depending on the time. So there are times where we settle a bunch of cases in a week and I'm like, wait, man, we got rid of, we got, we got a lot of cases through. And Rebecca's like, don't get excited because we got grand jury on Monday. And sure enough, that's where the cases turn around, so.
We had seven, right, nine cases set for grand jury this past Monday. I indicted seven of the nine and the other people probably, so it, it is odd that happens.
And I think it's important to note that while we are focused here today on domestic violence cases, the advocates don't only work with domestic violence cases. So they have, I mean, they, they have a lot of cases that, that are not domestic violence oriented that they also work. So it's all.
So for our office to better answer that, the other two advocates split the rest of the attorneys and I just have Rebecca because she has a pretty heavy docket, so.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that.
Yes ma'am.
So just a point of fact before we continue, because I know the commissioners have more to say. Um, this is a work session for the commission that the public gets to listen to, so we'll ask questions. If you're here and you will have comments later, you're invited to fill out a comment card and you'll have a chance to speak during the formal meeting. Just want to make that clear. So when we close, uh, we'll be closing the work session, uh, and just having commission comments, uh, at the end. I just want to say thank you, I appreciate the eye-opening, uh, uh, what you were sharing Sergeant, about what you go through and then what everybody else, I appreciate the fact that the county and the city are working closely together on, get together on this. Uh, I appreciate your passion. And I'm just saying this, I can see it, I can hear it and, and also hear the overwhelmed. I mean, I know that when you're asked what's your caseload and you kind of like, huh, I mean, you're, you're overwhelmed. And, and it's like, you know, that's the gasp. And, uh, just appreciate what you're doing and thank you for, um, kind of even opening our eyes more, uh, to this. Other commissioners, feel free to go ahead.
I wanted to just follow up on the caseload piece. I will say that I am a special education administrator, so I totally understand outrageous caseloads and the scramble to get things done. That's why I wanted some perspective on that. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, thank you so much, this was really insightful and I would agree with Mayor Rui, you can definitely, um, sense the passion behind your work. Um, just a, a question I was thinking about, because of the way that the cases are, are labeled, that how you said, you know, they may be labeled as stalking and they may not necessarily be evident, uh, that it's a domestic violence case. And the fact that they are often dismissed, uh, between courts, uh, per se. How can you accurately, or can you accurately report on domestic violence within our community? Is that, I mean, can you?
So for us at the sheriff's office, we do keep statistics on the cases that we handle only. Um, so I can only speak for us, so we do, we keep a spreadsheet every year. Um, and then we keep statistics that are reported to the state of Ohio as well as other statistics, like repeat offenders, how many stalking cases, how many jail calls I'm listening to, how much we're using advocacy. Uh, so there's a lot of stuff that, that I keep personally, um, ju- just for our knowledge base. Um, but I think it, and they can speak to it better than I can. I think it would be far more difficult, uh, because I have tried to go, so we will keep like the charges that we initially charged with. Uh, and then when I get some spare time in my busy day, I go try to go back and track those cases. Um, but that's almost impossible most times, but I, I think it's probably speak to what their statistic keeping looks like.
I can tell you that in our office, we are not a, a statistic-driven office for, for a reason. Um, my boss feels very strongly that we need to have the ability to try cases, even if not easy cases. We have passion about a case, if we have a case that is not going to necessarily be an easy win, we still need to be able to try it. And if we were, if we were solely statistic-driven, we wouldn't be able to do that because what would matter would be what we win and what we don't. So every case is important, every case is, is itself, so we don't keep statistics about necessarily what types of cases we have. And I can tell you roughly caseloads, but I don't know that it would be easy to track exactly how many, for example, domestic violence cases. Particularly because they surround so many different areas of crime. They're not all called domestic violence.
I think another thing that happens too is, for example, we were talking about cases being filed in, um, municipal court and then dismissed and taken to common pleas court. Sometimes what happens, it's not uncommon for there to be like, let's say they charged somebody with a felonious assault and a domestic violence, but that's the same incident. Because the domestic violence is a misdemeanor and the felonious assault is a felony, those will actually be charged as two separate. And then if the felonious assault is indicted, even if whether or not the domestic violence is indicted, it will be dismissed in municipal court. Because for reasons of double jeopardy, we do not want to jeopardize the felony case. And sometimes Rebecca will call me and say, hey, you have this guy who's charged with, um, seven counts of protection order violation, we're going to indict him on a menacing case. At that point, those cases will be dismissed. When you look at those cases, it just looks like we've dismissed the case. In actuality, the case has, um, moved over to common pleas court. But if you didn't know the, the facts behind the case, there's no way you would know that by looking at it.
So you have to dismiss the lesser to get to the greater.
Yeah, we dismiss the lesser to get to the bigger charge.
And sometimes I indict both, I'll indict a domestic violence.
And so at the sheriff's office, we handle annually calls for service, not just chargeable offenses. Anywhere from six hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty cases, just related on intimate partner violence. That does include family members as well. I can only imagine what the city of Springfield takes.
So, so based off of your answer to my previous question, it's, it's really hard to track things and I understand, I totally understand your answer of not being a statistic-based, uh, court, which is great. Um, yeah, definitely. Um, I guess to follow up, then based off of that answer, it would almost be impossible to benchmark domestic violence across like cities because they all probably operate differently, correct?
Yeah, so even between the sher-
Like us versus Dayton even.
Yes, so, uh, even, even smaller scale, us in the city of Springfield, um, they handle traditionally more violent crimes than we do. Um, we have the ability with our unit to handle these and take a little more time to investigate and get prosecutor follow-up when they need it. So like, they, there's nothing for them to call or text me for me to come over and meet with the victim. The city of Springfield doesn't have that ability. You know, you're, law enforcement nationwide, you're doing more and more with less and less. So that's why we do work with the city of Springfield. Uh, again, we have monthly meetings where the city of Springfield, uh, Sergeant is sitting with me and we're discussing how we can help each other because it's, again, it's, it spans the socioeconomic scale in this community. And no one entity can, can do it all. So when I say this collective, uh, uh, crew here that addresses these crimes is something that's really not happening. And I travel nationwide and teach. This is something that other communities model. So I, I'm not saying by any stretch of the imagination that we are perfect. I'm not saying by any stretch of the imagination that we don't mess up because we're human. But when, when I talk about addressing gender-based violence crimes, I, I can tell you, like, these women, the individuals that we work with at Project Woman, City Lookout, DD, all of these community, um, groups, we use everyone that we possibly can to help us in what we're trying to do. It's not, I can't handle it all at the sheriff's office, the city of Springfield can't handle it all. They can't handle it individually, she's sitting on a hundred and sixty-three cases of just gender-based violence crimes. So I know that, that when you sit back and look at these crimes and you look at these offenders, they are dangerous offenders. Uh, and I would tell any law enforcement officer, victim safety is officer safety, period. These are the offenders that ambush us, these are the offenders that kill us. But we are doing something special here and we, we try very hard every single day to work with victims and meet them where they're at, not where we want them to be. I can't put my expectations on another human being that may not have my privilege. So we try to meet them where they are and serve them the best we possibly can. And I cannot focus on it enough, that doesn't always mean going through the criminal justice system. That does not always mean that that is the best course of action. Imagine me trying to report my significant other for domestic violence as a police officer. There's no way, there's no way. So we try to, to meet each individual's case, that person's needs and move that forward. I, I can, I follow with cases every day and I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to go through the criminal justice system or I don't want to go to court. I understand that, but let me explain this to you. Can you talk to the prosecutor and maybe we come to a plea agreement and you, that person you may think needs anger management or drug or alcohol counseling or mental health? And we haven't even addressed those barriers. Uh, make the court, allow the court to hold that person accountable versus you. Just let us do that. And so we really try to meet victims where they're at and serve those victims as best we possibly can.
If we just walk away, nothing happens. That's what I tell most, I understand where you're at, but if we just walk away, we just leave it the way it is, it's going to happen.
Thank you.
You're leading right into my question. Um, first of all, I want, I'm glad you spotlighted that this is a female expert panel. So kudos to you ladies, thank you for everything you do in our community. Um, my question was more towards mental health and assessments rehabilitation. So not only just for the victim, but the offender. So we stop it, especially generational, we talked about how, you know, they grew up this way, that's what they do. How, what does that look like?
So I know City Lookout has a program, Journey to Free Freedom, I know Municipal Court uses that. Um, there, and they can speak to this better than I can. There are different avenues available depending on where the, the charge goes to, so what court it goes to. Um, so I know Municipal Court uses Journey to Freedom. But again, to go back to federal funding, we're cutting and cutting and cutting and we need mental health help, we need addiction help, we need help for the homeless. I mean, when I say we try to provide wraparound services, there's just no way for us to provide wraparound services. Uh, so we lean on everyone in the community. Um, but I do think that, think that these are things that are, are necessary for both the victim and the offender. But as the victim, the offender is going to use everything that they possibly can to make this victim out to be not a victim. So as the offender, I would use mental health against that victim, I would use addiction against that victim, I would use their criminal record. I would use the fact that they're here maybe undocumented, I would use the fact that they can't speak good English. I would use everything possible to keep them from participating with them. So when you talk about setting up services, how do you set up services for that?
I think this is also why it's important that we listen to victims because a lot of times victims will come to me and say, you know, I think that this happened because this person is schizophrenic or because they have an addiction or because of whatever reason. And it's important for me to listen to them, to understand where they're coming from. And maybe what ends is, you know, I, I have a recommendation for West Central, which is an inpatient treatment or a recommendation for treatment of some client. And very often what we have is somebody who is committed because they're just simply not safe and they're not going to be safe. Um, not very often, that happens occasionally. So it's important that we listen to victims because they know the person that they're with and that also they know that I'm going to listen to them and not just dismiss their concerns because they do care.
Every victim is the expert in their, in their relationship, not us.
And, and one of the things that we do, and I know common pleas court does it too, is, is when we get to the point where an offender is, is pleading or has been found guilty of something, we do what's called a PSI or pre-sent investigation. Um, that gives the victim a chance to sit down in our court, just with the probation department and, and give them those facts that might not otherwise come out in a case. Um, and that helps them, they make a sentencing recommendation to the judge based on what they've found. Um, so that helps them whether, you know, it's very common for a victim to say, this person needs drug now, this person needs anger management counseling. So, um, those PSI's do give the court a closer, a, a, a better view of what's going on, um, in that relationship and in that person's life. Um, that way they can try to form a sentence that's going to both, I guess, punish and rehabilitate.
Thank you for all the information you have provided to us. First and foremost, critically important. Second thing I want to thank you for is recognizing that we need to work together on this. No one organization, agency, I don't care how big, is able to do this by themselves. And we keep coming back to this over and over. Our motto of forward together, I think that's the only way you can go forward is together in any meaningful way. Last point, we are trying to track what federal and state money we are losing. So if you have information on federal and/or state money that you have lost or grants that you've had to walk away from, please let Brian's office know. Because we're trying to put together a report card for our community as well as number of agencies and organizations that we will be able to share with the community to say, not only here are the dollars lost, but here's what they would have paid for. Uh, so I encourage you to please do that. You need contact information, I'm sure Brian can give it to you, but he's the point of collection for that effort. Again, my personal thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the invitation tonight and thank you ladies for your expertise.
I just have one more question, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's actually two, but I'll, I'll be easy. So what data are we collecting? It, to guide our practices, to, to, you know, help us make different decisions or just to be able to understand the efficacy of the court? Like, are we collecting any data?
Our office doesn't collect data, but the, like the-
You said does not?
Does not, but the clerk's office does provide data to the Supreme Court. Um, and they, they track different numbers.
So we're not collecting data on like your practices currently? Like the wrapper, all the work that you guys are doing to help and assist? You know, all the interventions that you guys are putting in place, do we have data for those things?
So yes, that would be, it would be the VOKA grant that we, that the victim witness division has. Um, victim wit- Victim witness tracks, we track things such as like if I am working with a victim for a victim impact statement, that's a session in itself. If I'm doing a safety planning session, if I'm doing an intake, a protection order petition, which is different than a hearing. So those are two different services. So yes, they are, victim witness does track that. I will put this out there. We are currently working on updating our grant management system. So we're in the process of that now. The prosecutor is aware like of what the issue looks like. So right now we're doing it manually, which is
so much fun, right?
So much fun because it takes a lot more time. So I will say that like there is, every time we have to do grant reporting, we're like, I, listen, I did not get into this field for math.
Somebody's got to collect something.
Yeah, yes, yes. But we are, we do have to report it for our VOKA grant funding.
Perfect. And do you guys as staff take cultural awareness trainings?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, as you guys were talking, you could tell that this is a group that is definitely working together. I mean, you just see it. So appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So moved.
No move. Second, thank you guys so much.
We appreciate it.
It's very informative, thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes, thank you again.